I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we will begin as usual with the legislative meeting.
Flight of the citizens of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God. Living in peace, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wirth, would you call forward please?
Council President Jim N. Satter.
Here.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Here.
Councilperson Donovan DeWalter.
Here.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Here.
Councilperson Brian Madowick.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Valerie Leary. City Administrator Anthony Anderson. Cala. City Treasurer, Mr. President. Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi. Building District Attorney Jeffrey Burrows. City District Attorney Lisa Hatfield. And City Planner, Chris Rogers.
Thank you. We'll begin as usual with the minutes of which we have lots because we have lots of special meetings this past month. The first one is the meeting, special meeting from Wednesday, June 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of June 10th? If not, is it...
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved as submitted. That's the regular, last regular meeting. And then the next minutes are from a special meeting of the next night, June 11th. That was a special budget workshop. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of June 11th? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes of June 11th are approved. The next was, next, the Wednesday, June 18th, another special budget meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next, Wednesday, June 25th, another special budget meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of June 25th are approved. And finally, the minutes of June 26th, our last special budget meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of June 26th are approved. Thank you all very much and thanks to Ms. Wirth for doing extra duty this time. The next item is the Treasurers' Report, Mr. Whistler.
Thank you very much. The numbers that I'm going to be giving you for the year end, but these numbers are all subject to audit. And so this is without the audit. At the end of the year, June 30th, we had $11,240,000 in our accounts, of which $8,395,000 was in the unrestricted funds. $2,844,714 was in the restricted funds. For the year that's ended now, we had revenues of $6,3326. And we had expenditures of $6,382,000. So you can see that we had a spike deficit. Fortunately, we have funds in the account to cover it. So unless there's any questions, I'll say that's the basic financial report. All these numbers again are subject to audit and we'll be getting a financial report from the auditors.
I have a question for, probably City Administrator at this point, but just a note for future meeting after the... I'm sorry. Mr. Tantillo, can you just, a note for after the audit to highlight, so basically we have raised, we expended $6.4 million about. I would like to know what's the fiscal year's concluded, how much of restricted funds we have spent? And I think you might know that already and picture that now, and out of the unreserved, 1.26 that we had funded last year to balance the budget, how much of that is? I know, I don't need to pay, I mean, you can't provide if you know, but once the audit is done, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I won't give that final number tonight because this is not, you know, the full year end. If, you know, the fiscal year has ended, we'll still receive additional invoices that need to be paid out of last year's budget. So yes, once we get through the audit process, we'll have those numbers.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tantillo.
Thank you. I'm just gonna very briefly touch on this as the auditors will touch on this.
Oh, pardon me, sorry, thank you, Mr. Spaka. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report subject to audit?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Treasurers' Report is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Tantillo.
No problem. So the budget was approved on June 26th after very thoughtful consideration and eight lengthy budget meetings. We have decided to move forward with the property tax increase after 16 years of not increasing taxes. Tax bills will be sent out later this month to endure your mortgage company. The eligibility requirements for senior and disability discounts have been expanded. Please contact the office to make appointments for, to see if you're eligible for these discounts. An update on the Delaware Railroad Trail Study with JMT. Is that the project continues to be underway. We're hoping to wrap up in the next month or so and come back to council in August or September with a presentation on what we have with this project. For the Del Dod, Delaware Street Railroad Crossing improvements, they're continuing to work to complete the railroad arm improvements this summer. And also work with Norfolk Southern to finalize the plans for the rest of the project and complete the work by next spring and summer. Nothing has changed since the last meeting on that. At the last meeting I announced, we were planning for a map go-walkability study in July. At the end of July, we're actually gonna do this the first week of August, on August 6th. So we'll post an agenda and a meeting file, so please keep an eye out for that. And this first study will focus on a historic area and we'll have a second study in the fall to focus on other areas of the city. The citywide paving contracts and ADA sidewalk contracts are still underway. You'll probably see a lot of signs out as that work continues. The, an update on the Dobbinsville fishing pier. They, Denver has been working on permanent approvals from different organizations, including Armin Core, the State Waterlands, and Coastal Zone Management. And that will take some time. They hope to begin construction by next year, if not sooner. We are continuing to work with our summer intern. She's been a great asset thus far and is working on very important projects for us. And we've begun to work with the Biden School PhD student, who's also working on a project for us to focus on infrastructure needs and capital plan. Couple of grant updates. We have applied, had applied for the ORPT grant pre-application last month and have been accepted to continue with the full grant application, which will be due in September. We are focusing this grant on the Delaware Railroad Trail Study and continuing that work. We did finally receive the security batteries for which we applied for, and received a Homeland Security Grant. This will help us ensure continued safety at future events in the city. We have also applied for a Safe Streets for All Grant to establish a safety action plan for the city to highlight ways to improve safety on the streets and around railroad crossings. And we intend to apply for another Delaware High Council Grant to continue advancing the work of the Delaware Railroad Trail Study. We have also this past month, applied for another cyber security grant through Homeland Security and intend to apply for additional grants as this month continues. We have received word of bond bill approval. We've received grants for three projects. The first was the flood vulnerability study project, which was the intended work of the grant, which got canceled. And the state partially funded that at $100,000. We also received police department HVAC upgrades, or building upgrades for $55,000 and administration building upgrades for $150,000. There were quite a few bond bill applications that did not get approved. As I understand, a lot of the street projects that municipalities apply for were not approved this budget season by the state. So that included Seventh Street from South to Delaware Avenue, Shaw Alley, Penn Street, Umbrella Row, Dobbinsville Roadways, Linden Avenue, Juniper Street, Chquette Square, Lincoln Street, Arbutus and Mehan Avenues, 11th and 12th Streets, and Bandai Village. Also were not approved for the feasibility study for future potential property locations and were not approved for street light insulation at Chquette Square. So we're hopeful that we'll find other opportunities to fund these projects. And we did get municipal street aid funding, which can help us, you know, pursue some of these streets. It's a lot less money than we had applied for bond before, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to do some of it. The Dog Park, just an update, we're working with the city engineer to put together specs for the fencing and other amenities, should have an update by the next meeting. Just wanted to encourage residents to continue signing up for Code Red. It's very important to me about other emergencies. That way we can notify you as soon as possible and there's multiple means of communication. We did an update on the charter changes during the budget season, but I want to make sure everyone's aware that HD 144 regarding variable tax rates set along for equal property taxes was approved by both the House and the Senate. And we're still waiting with the governor's signature on this and which would then allow us to explore the possibility of variable tax rates. The other bill, SD 127 regarding rents and gross taxes on the rentals has been on hold and still needs to continue working with the legislature, which would move us to next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Ms. Tantillo?
So, just a few. Can you just repeat the administrative building upgrades that we received?
Yes, $150,000.
$150,000, thank you. And the last question about bond bill is, was it kind of same approach across the entire state for this street?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
As per conversations with Senator Thor, that, and looking through the actual bill itself, there were no streets ever funded.
I know it's been a tough year for the state as well, so just wanted to confirm. For Dog Park, and this can be answered by councilperson Zell as well, is I wanted to just get an update. Have we reached that at the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I did reach out and they said there's no money right now. It's something we need to do at the beginning of the year. But maybe we can look for next year for some additional assistance, but I did reach out.
Did they identify when their, you know, fiscal year starts and or time to apply for it is? So we can...
It seems to be more the end of the year from the beginning of next year.
January 1st, okay, thank you. And my last question. I lost the train to... Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief McCabe?
Oh, I do remember.
I'm sorry, Mr., while, while the chief's going down, Mr. Spaka did remember his...
I did remember about sidewalks. On, at least Fourth and Fifth Street, I've noticed that on a newly installed ADA sidewalk, the edges are now, they're more sharp than they are on Delaware. So just curious if that's done?
No, so thanks for bringing that up. The, the curving in the ADA sidewalks, they'll take some time. So while they may have been installed, they need to, additional standards be added over time to make sure that the bricks are, you know, secure and as they settle over time. And then for the codes, sorry, for the pavement itself, they'll come out and do that all at once, once all of the sidewalks are complete.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Chief.
Doctor, good evening. I will be brief. First, I'll start off with...
Thank you, Colonel. Oh, you're writing it down, apparently, Chief.
First, I want to start with some of our directed control. These directed control assignments are based on citizens' complaints and we continue to get complaints about speed on moving the road, speed on West Seventh Street. So we continue to enforce citations issued to road areas. We've also, as many know, focused on enforcement in the parking, for parking related to street sweeping. So we continue to, by outreach in advance. Our goal is on the Sunday before the street sweeping week starts, we're gonna post again, remind residents with the schedule to make sure to move their cars and then continue to enforce that as well. We're hoping that after maybe a couple of weeks, folks start to recognize the pattern and that number of citations increases. We're all aware of the River Road Project started on Monday. It was bumped a few weeks for handful of reasons, but they started right in early Monday morning. We did plenty of outreach in advance with Del Dod, with Google Fire Company's been helpful. OAMS and a lot of our partners here helped share our messaging to warn folks that typically our residents have figured this out, but it's the folks that cut through that end up kind of getting caught off guard. So we're making some minor adjustments as we go for to kind of get some messaging farther away from the city, give people a little bit more heads up as we get closer to when they have to make a decision. We're really trying to encourage people to stay off West Sixth Street and then obviously Vermont. There's been a couple of, you know, the staff was in the beginning, but we have, our contractor, the contractor has left room to pay for overtime. So we've got some officers that are gonna be there in the morning and in the afternoon rush hour for the first few days and then we'll focus on Thursdays and Fridays. You know, hopefully this project doesn't take as long as they anticipated. And the last thing I want to bring up, and I just wanted to reiterate the city administrator's push for people signing up for Code Red. We need as many forms and many platforms as we can get to deliver messaging, especially when, you know, when things happen fast. So we get a lot of questions after the fact. I think, I think Code Red is the easiest way to get, to get the messaging out. It's a, it's a simple process and it's a, and you know, who doesn't have their cellphone open, right? So whatever we can do to get that messaging out, it'll be of the help and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for you, Chief?
I just have one quick one for River Road. I haven't been downriver intentionally avoiding you. Do we have, do we have detour signs for, you know, Hamburg Road or whatever earliest point people should really turn off of Route 9 as well as on North Route 9 as well?
Yeah, so I could briefly summarize that. Hamburg Road, there's, there's signs that push you northbound traffic to Hamburg. And then again, a reminder in Langol, we really don't want to have too much traffic on Langol. And then DSP also has, has some page up officers that are a bit south of the project so that they can help with that. Coming south, there's a sign north at Moore's length. And then there's all sorts of signs that you come around the Ben the Ferry cutoff to discourage people from the extension. And then Sixth Street, 273 141 has signs pushing you to put the outer on.
Certainly, thank you so much, Governor.
I was a concerned with the signs. It says, it's closed at the bridge. I don't think people understand what that means.
So I will take the blame for that. My thought behind that was, and I, we did have to push this, but it was "bridge out." It's not at the bridge, it says "bridge out," that's what it should say.
It does, but I'm, people are not, I don't think they're understanding where that exactly is.
Well, my thought was that if, if, our concern was that people become, they become numb to the signs. What you see where nine closes, like I got a 50/50 chance of making it through the water, right? And they take that chance. We don't want them to be confused with, you know, the regular road closing. So we thought that the language "bridge out" really discouraged people from driving, so. Sorry for the confusion.
No problem. I was a Washington and I had three cars, made U-turns at the stop sign, so.
Well, that's better than the opposite, right?
True.
Thank you, Chief. I just have one question, perhaps if it's not for you, it's from Ms. Tantillo. And I was just wondering, what was the expected constructed, construction time if known, recognizing that that's weather permitting, a lot of other, you know, factors to be considered?
So initially, it was a four-week projection that shrunk to two weeks to some of the things that we're hearing today. Or some good news today from the project managers feeling that they're ahead of schedule, so. But this weather probably is not helping, so.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief. Mr. Brookstrom, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just to remind you that the school street paving project's beginning tomorrow, Thursday.
In case people didn't hear, because Mr. Berg's done that, I'm like, the school street paving project begins tomorrow or Thursday. So if you use school street, you may need to avoid that for, how long do you think? Dog Park?
Two weeks to one.
Okay. Thank you. Council Communications, Ms. Kedda.
Yeah, I just... Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city administrator for, for helping me with the few issues that I had this, the past couple of weeks with some, a couple drainage complaints and some other constituent issues. Thank you.
I know Separation Day is pretty far away, but are we gonna have a recap from last year and what they're gonna be doing for next year since it's 250th, 250th anniversary?
Yeah, we've already begun planning for next year. And as that moves further along, I will make updates. Absolutely.
Excellent. So for clarification, street cleaning, that's the week of 7/20, well, I'm a micra, since that's the first, third, fourth week?
I believe so. I believe so.
Okay, and then so on 7/20, we're gonna use the Code Red to send out notifications?
Yes, and shall we can share it everywhere and it's on calendar.
Understood, but if we can get it on the Code Red, that'd be great. I think the main use of that tool to help communicate to people. So tomorrow's Newcastle Community Summer Concerts. Tomorrow is Lilia Reynolds from Understand if She's Country. And they're gonna be weekly from, to August 6th. Also, I'm doing the day in Old Newcastle. I'm looking for volunteers to help organize. If you're interested, please let me know. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Spaka?
Good evening, everybody. I'll be brief as well. I hope everybody just had a great Fourth of July weekend and enjoyed some fireworks. We did with our family. I just wanted to thank Rioa Beach staff today. I was able to tour their complex of my in-laws. It was quite fun to go see the different cities, even infrastructure and processes. So just wanted to thank them for hospitality.
Mr. McRae?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to acknowledge some recent Newcastleians who lost their lives just recently, unfortunately, over the Fourth of July holiday. Mr. Bernard Pinkett, who was a lifelong resident who attended the Buttonwood Color School, was a lifelong member of the Buttonwood Methodist Church, lost his life in an accident. Not only for, he may have crossed some of their wires in regards to the general being hit. He's a man of many talents, he served this community in many ways. And for an extended period of time, he actually served this city on the planning commission. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge the loss of the life of Mr. Horton. He died a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, excuse me. He was a very nice, warm-hearted person who always had a welcome smile and thoughts and prayers with his family and his wife, Linda. June 30th marked the end of the legislative season session in Dover. I think Newcastle has the best delegation. And I'd like to say thank you to Senator Thor, House Speaker Minor Brown, Representative Franklin Coe, and Senator Brown for the work that helps not only Newcastle but all Delawareans. Also, in regards to the legislative season, I would like to provide a couple of updates. The city of Newark has been providing the green light to tax university students. Projections show that they can generate upwards of $2.4 million of additional dollars to save, to pay staff, to improve infrastructure, et cetera. Marijuana has been legalized sales in Delaware and that will commence in August with the state exclusively collecting all fees and associated taxes. Dover, Wellington, and Newcastle County are considering efforts to challenge and seek opportunities to also collect funds. Newcastle County Council recently signed off on updates and increases to impact fees that they collect for the benefit of Newcastle County Police, even less parks that they operate and libraries that they operate. I'd like to thank and acknowledge Newcastle Councilman Kevin Connecto and Councilman Carter for coming locally to Newcastle a few weeks ago. The council and administrative staff had a conflict of interest in regards to a budget meeting, but we certainly want to thank them for coming to our community and we want to see them in the near future. In regards to a couple of updates coming up, this Saturday, July the 12th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., the Buttonwood Color School Museum will be hosting Dancing for a Cause, with proceeds going towards revitalization of that building and programming to support the Wellington Ballet. Please stay tuned for additional information. It will be forthcoming. Looking forward to another blood drive with a twist, twist coming in September, hopefully. And all my efforts and energy will continue to go towards a betterment of one unified thriving community with sustained independence for future generations while honoring the rich legacy of the past. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. McRae. I also hope everyone enjoyed the Fourth of July weekend. I was here, it was pretty quiet here in Newcastle because, of course, we had our big celebration a couple of weeks earlier on Separation Day. And as you probably heard, the council passed a budget for the new fiscal year, which began on July 1st. Pardon me. It includes an increase in property taxes. We didn't take that step lightly and we tried to help our seniors and disabled individuals with limited income by increasing both the income limit for an exemption and the amount to be exempted. We had seven public special budget meetings in which we hammered out all the details. We knew from the beginning that we would either have to draw funds from our reserves or raise taxes to meet necessary expenses. We decided to delay some hiring and took other steps to reduce the budget, but the tax increase was still necessary. We can't continue to draw down our reserve funds. The increase was not needed due to special projects. It was needed to meet the ongoing expenses necessary to operate the city. We must pay competitive salaries to our police officers or we'll lose them to other jurisdictions. We must offer competitive salaries to our other city employees. Just like with our homes, costs have increased. These include insurance, maintenance on our buildings, gas for police and public works vehicles, protecting our computerized records, and much more. We need a steady, predictable income stream to provide the services residents deserve and expect. Some are saying the taxes should have been increased years ago. They imply that this is a reason not to increase them now. The council discussed raising taxes in the fall of 2019 and probably would have done so in 2020 if the pandemic had not hit that spring. Increasing taxes when many people were laid off and the economy was crashing didn't seem like a good idea. Then we had an influx of federal funds which covered both the extra expenses incurred due to the pandemic and some other expenses as well. Those funds are not ongoing, so we need to increase taxes now. Not doing so would only prolong the problem and result in an even larger increase in the future. Thank you. Report from the mayor.
I'm gonna defer so that we can move through the meeting due to the weather. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Comments from Goodwill Fire Company, Captain Moore?
Thank you for your patience while I worked through the new fire reporting system and getting the report out of the month of the day. In the report, EMS end of it did not change at all. The only thing that changed was the fire report end. Everything stayed the same in reference to the layout as we had with the prior reporting system. The only thing that did change is the graph had changed at all. So if you need me to change that graph in any way to reflect the numbers, let me know, and I can, and I can do that. But I think keeping it very similar to the EMS reporting makes it a lot easier. The only other two things that I had is just a couple of the incidents that we ended up having today. One was a tractor trailer fire at Frenchtown and Frenchtown Basin. Shout out to Newcastle City Police, they did a great job before we even got there of getting the traffic mitigated, so that helped tremendously with that. It ended up being the undercarriage of the trailer that was on fire, so that was quickly mitigated. And shortly after that, putting the response to test with Route 9 being closed, we ended up having a house fire on the southern end, so, but we were able to get a, to get a good jump on it. And although it happened to go around and the increased traffic on Frenchtown Road there, we were still able to make a good time arrive as the first unit. The fire was contained to the origin, and it soon got turned over to the fire marshal's office. But other than that, that's all I have unless you guys have anything.
Any questions for Captain Moore? Thank you. Okay, public comments. The usual rule, there's a signing sheet on the podium. Please speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you, and you have three minutes.
Suzanne Swift, 16 West Fourth Street. So I have some wonderful news. Cor has finally reached our shovel-ready number. We've raised over $1,075,000, which opens up a number of grants that will pledge to us that will be sending their checks this month. So we're ready to place an order. Before we do that, we will be finalizing our designs. I met today with Antonina and with Leila to review some ideas, and Leila's ideas will be incorporated into the final design. You guys will get that design, hopefully in time to vote on a resolution next month. And if that's possible, then we'll place an order. It'll take six months to build, it'll probably take two to four weeks to install, so we're looking at a ribbon-cutting date, spring 2026. I invite everybody here in the audience, anybody who's interested in coming down to Lewis, there is a ship in Lewis that will be, is the exact same ship of one of the designs that we're considering. Would love to have everybody's feedback on what we will eventually have here in the playground. So I know in the past, several of your members have come to take a look at playgrounds. I'm inviting you, please do that this time too, because your feedback is, will be important. We want everybody to be aware of and to know in advance exactly the playground that we're building for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank your committee for your work.
Good question. While it's under construction, how can impact the existing part of the park there?
That's a good question. The last time we had it, we had a temporary gate that was surrounding the playground, which was deteriorating effective. This time, I think our, they will be a little bit stronger, but because this will happen in early spring, the playground will be not, kids won't be able to play there for the two to four weeks that we will be replacing or actually augmenting the equipment at the playground.
Thank you.
So there will be some downtime for the playground. Also, wanted to give an incredible shout out to our government officials, you including, but also Speaker Melissa Brown, because she did an incredible assist for us with CTF funds to get us to where we are today. So just wanted to acknowledge her, Senator Orr, and everybody in our delegation who works so hard to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill Gross, 13 on 113th Street. Suzanne, amazing. That's all I can say. I mean, 50,100, 200,000, but you're stellar, you're rock star. So thank you for your pro and persistence. What will it take to stop the dog park that out of roughly 75 to 80 people that I've got on a petition, only three want it? How do we stop it? How do we stop it? Or did you guys already decide for the residents of the City of Newcastle, if you're going to do it regardless of the amount of people that are in favor of wasting money on it? Can I get an answer?
The answer is, we did a survey, and the majority of people wanted the dog park.
Wanted?
Yes.
So I can FOIA a request to get the actual program of that?
Sure.
Okay, because currently, you're in the rears. You're not even close to having a majority, especially there. They want it in the park if it's going to be built so that their kids can be in the playground, they can picnic, they can see the water. That's where families want to go, including their family pet. So again, this budget did have projects in it that did not need to be in there. I'm going to continue to collect names, and I will submit the petition, and I hope you consider it. Are they going to, the students are going to be working on that opt-in tab for our site to receive events, special notifications, and meetings, sort of like what gets sent out by MSC? Is that on that project list to do?
I believe our current students are working on financial planning for capital, capital projects. Is that correct, Ms. Tantillo?
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Brookstrom his comments.
Okay.
So there will not be any tab put on our site like what was discussed last fall?
I'll answer you when you're done with your comments.
Okay. As far as Laura Fontana, I'm vehemently against her being put on the finance. I think, just like with the objections of when she wanted to run for the trustees, her company's very integrated into our community, and I just feel it's a huge conflict of interest. I guess that's pretty much it. Thank you.
As I gave an update a few months ago, the students did work on project updates for our website, and we are referring those to the state to implement them, so they're underway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, yes, sorry, sir.
Good evening. I really don't have too many, anything specific, it's just some random thoughts from, from somebody that's kind of newer to the area and has not been here for a lot of things to happen to, understand how they happen, I guess. The budget, I know, I appreciate all the hard work and all the meetings, I'm sorry to get any, but coming as it's coming, the total amount of the budget, issues as to what makes up the budget, what we're spending money for, where we're getting money from, it's totally not transparent to me anyway, because it hasn't been publicly safer yet. You know, there's a spreadsheet out there on the internet for anybody that's savvy enough to find it, so you can figure out what your taxes might be, but that process or that terminology is a little bit alien to me, because I own the real estate, I've been in the real estate business for most of my life, so I found it confusing. I would hope in the future, like it's coming here, that there's more time allotted so that the public can be more knowledgeable. Code RED, I'd love to be part of it. I don't know how you get to be part of it, so. I haven't seen it and maybe missed it in the paper, I don't know where else. I'm thinking somebody probably is going to say that it's, you know, it's been announced on the website, I mean, or on the, or the website, or on Facebook someplace. I was an early adopter of Facebook. I hate Facebook. I don't go there unless I absolutely have to, so if that's where you're putting out information, there are a lot of people probably like me that are not seeing it. The street sweeping was actually one of the reasons I thought I might make a comment tonight, and I don't understand why we decided that street sweeping would be the third full week. I don't know why we just can't have it the third week. And the second thing is that the hours, beginning at 7:00 in the morning, beginning that people have to move cars, if it started at 8:00 in the morning, people that work will already move their car, so they wouldn't have to go to additional effort. And also, after the street sweep, sweeping is done, it seems that there should be some way to let people know that it's done, and it's perfectly all right to park there, because I shouldn't be able to park there. And then, as an older issue, well, I have two things. Comprehensive plan, I started to read the old one, there are a lot of issues out there that it seems that people have to address during the next 10 years. I'm curious what's been addressed in the last 10 years about that. I'll quit, thank you, with three seconds to go.
I can share the Code RED sign-up here, but the information is on our website and Facebook and...
I'm just saying, that's not...
No, but it's on our website as well, so you can go there, but I'll share.
I don't think that that's particularly good for communicating with the community on those two sites.
I think we also included it on the crier that comes out with people's utility bill. So even people who don't use the website get a utility bill, and it's a piece of paper they can read, so.
Good evening, Bill Henry from Walton. I just got a question for Council. Can you guys invest in two more microphones? I think I counted, you guys can actually get away with just two, so that you're all not passing them around, because it's honestly, as us who sit in the audience, it's a little annoying when you guys have to turn them on and turn them off. Two more mics will give each of you all a mic, and you won't have to hassle with passing them around for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nala. I live on Church Street in New Castle. So I just had special requests. I've been living here since fifth grade, I'm 30 now, and I went on Google, and I saw the population of Delaware is at a million now, and it was at a million like a couple years ago, so my request is for safety and maintenance. So, the first one, the biggest one, I'd like to request a bridge over the intersection on 273 with McDonald's, the Burger King, the Verizon, the car dealership, the farmer's market, because I feel like it's an unspoken fear of crossing that road. It's very huge, and if anyone here in the city, the streets are really, San Francisco and Philadelphia, the streets are very large, but they're really pedestrian-friendly, so it's hard for pedestrians to get, like, hit. And Delaware was more like suburban years ago, it's becoming a little more city-like, so I'm starting to see people on bikes, skates, and scooters, and crossing that road, it would be helpful if it was, because that's a really busy area of a lot of stores. It would just be helpful, it would just be a little, like, safer. Okay, second one, more benches, there's like little benches around me at, in Newcastle, more general parks. I live in a really big neighborhood, there's, there's nothing here, we're trying to bench, just it. And trash cans in Newcastle, and more bike lanes. My sister was saying she was in the lift, and she's people riding bikes more, the lift almost hit the person, and I don't think people in Delaware are used to pedestrians, because it's not as city-like as, like, New York and Philadelphia, so just more bike lanes with the recovers. That's all. Thank you.
I'll just say that, that intersection that you spoke about, I believe that's outside the city limits.
Oh.
It's a Newcastle mailing address, but it's not inside the city, so I'm afraid the city doesn't have much weight to try to get things done on that.
Could you refer to somewhere where she'd be?
You could talk to someone at Delta or to our state representatives.
Okay. Sure.
Joe, would county council be a public for some of these?
I didn't hear where she lived, because she said she lived on the road, so depending on the neighborhood, it could be a county park, or it could be a, it could be a public or private open space from the community.
If you don't mind, just sharing, it's now, I would just say, depending on what parks, benches, and trash, which area limit, if they're not, if they're county parks, I would suggest going to county council or writing to a county council representative. If they're state, I would suggest writing to state representative for the district. That's, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, two letters that were sent via email, and people asked for them to be read. The first... The first is from Keith Adams of Delaware Street, and I'll just read what he wrote. "How can city finances possibly get so out of control for you to institute a 50% increase in one year? Appalling. Dog parks, fixed picnic tables, and van stands are the very last thing we need here. Also, Separation Day does not need to be a two-day carnival atmosphere affair. How about policing the historic area streets and Battery Park with regularity so we don't have another vandalism fiasco such as happened on the Strand a few weeks ago? As was mentioned in the letter folded into our municipal services bill and written by city administrator Ms. Tantillo, that some of the tax monies are used for cultural events. What cultural events? Street parties don't quite fit that description." Also, she mentioned fixed curbs. "The Strand curbing is in desperate need of resetting and leveling, and the cobblestone verge between the asphalt needs major, major attention. Where are the trustees' contributions for the well-being of the citizenry of Newcastle? If the historic area residents are expected to bear the brunt of tourism, we naturally expect a lot more maintenance of infrastructure and attention paid by police and laws enforced." And the second one is from Karen Wright of Seventh Street. "Why don't you build up the road on Route, pardon me, on Route 9 past Davin'sville? It's been that way for decades. After three..." "After three drops of rain, the road is completely, completely washed out every time, yet the city council keeps building more and more, only causing more chaos to the traffic we have already gone through, including the tractor trailers." I did respond to Ms. Wright and tell her that the current work being done on Route 9 by Delta is to help, try to help mitigate the flooding. Okay, we're going to change the sequence of events a bit. Mr. Rogers, our city planner, is with us, and he is here to speak to the last two items on the agenda, and rather have him, rather than have him have to say through the whole meeting, just to hear his two, we're going to skip to item seven and eight, and then we'll come back. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
So the first item is the municipal, the five-year report on the Comp Plan.
Thank you, Madam President. Chris Rogers from AE Comp, city planner. What you have in your packet is the Municipal Comprehensive Land use Plan Annual Report.
What you have in your packet is the Municipal Comprehensive Plan Annual Report. This is a requirement from state law that every year municipalities in Delaware had to submit a report to the Office of State Planning and Coordination regarding the status of the implementation items in the Comprehensive Plan and other general planning issues. So as before, the report that you have in front of you was blessed by the Planning Commission at their June meeting. The text that is in black regular font is the questionnaire from the Office of State Planning. Any text that's in italics or red are responses. So there are a series of questions that the State Planning Office asked under question number one, which has to do with where's, generally, where does the city stand to this gentleman's question regarding the Comprehensive Plan? Where does the city stand with implementation items within the Comprehensive Plan? So what we have been doing for the last several years from this questionnaire is taking the different goals that are in the Comprehensive Plan, various goals that are in the Comprehensive Plan, and stating what those goals are. So on the first page, G four, number three, that's directly from the December 2020 Comprehensive Plan. And in the red italics is the status of the various goals. I'm not going to go over any, anything specifically unless anyone has any questions.
I do have one question. On page three, item G seven, I don't know, G thirteen, the last paragraph on that page talks about the establishment of the Sea Level Rise Task Force, but it doesn't mention that that task force was later converted to the Permanent Flood Resiliency Committee, although on page... In section G thirteen, number three, I think it refers to the Flood Resiliency Committee. So I think there needs to be some updates.
I will make that change.
Thank you.
The, besides question number one that requests the status of the implementation items of the Comprehensive Plan, question two is highlight any significant accomplishments as we just referred to the various statuses of the goals in question number one. And question number three is the general question, are there any planning issues that the city is currently facing? Do you anticipate any Comp Plan changes which the Office of State Planning may be able to offer technical assistance? Generally, our response was, as everyone knows, we have a series of development projects that are in a pipeline equalling approximately 1,000 units. Just letting the Office of State Planning and Coordination know that, and let them know that the city's in the process of evaluating short-term rentals. And to your point, Madam President, well, there is the number four, Sea Level Rise Task Force. So I'll make reference to that sooner.
Yeah, it's just that they converted to a permanent committee, and I know they've been working with Rascal, so... Yeah, it, just to keep things consistent and accurate.
And, yes, and within this report is statements that the Planning Commission is currently getting, is currently in the process of conducting the five-year review of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. There will be reporting done at the next meeting on, the chair has appointed various members to review various chapters, and the commission members will be making statements regarding those chapters. As of this time, we don't know whether the Planning Commission's going to be making any recommendations regarding necessary changes to the plan at this five-year stage. So does anybody have any additional questions on the annual report?
I mean, I have several questions. One is for the question number one, G four dash three, very first page. Would it be worth mentioning how much of incentives so far we have, you know, in revenue loss, or whatever incentives we provided to mention to the state? Just as a, you know, pledge that we have made as a city? I know that we have, we mentioned at least the paragraphs, but I just don't know if it's worth quantifying it, just, just to talk. And do you know that by any chance, or anybody?
No, I do not, and I have, we would have to dig into the city's records to determine, to quantify the city's local incentives to the program, which is the waiver of permit fees.
Really transfer tax.
Really transfer tax. For first-time home buyers. And there's another larger development project incentive that faces in taxes, but I don't think, that faces in the increase in taxes as a result of the real property investment.
Is it rental over each year? There's, I don't know.
It's, it's a five-year phase, and then in five, in the fifth year, the full, the full, the full one hundred percent of the increase, of the increase in taxes as a result of the improvements kicks in.
Some of that, some of this information is on the D D D annual report, which I don't know if we need to do for the...
I don't know if the number is somewhere, it would be cool to know, hundred thousand dollars a year, or so far that we have, that, you know, dedicated as many resources, you know, for incentivizing people. I know there's not many projects, but just be curious, kind of know. And I, I think, Constance Person, they last year, maybe or something, said we would like to figure out how to incentivize it with more people. So just kind of tying up to that conversation. My next point, and I think my last one, is about, still section one, but in G thirteen, three, right before question two, for, for the Playhead Subcommittee Encore. I would like this to be more updated in the numbers, because it seems a little outdated in a sense, because we don't, and meetings that we just adopted from June tenth, we're talking about shallow ready with sixty thousand. I think there's a hundred million points that you mentioned, and meetings we just approved, that could probably go to here. I think that's a significant, you know, fundraising effort that we can, we can mention there on behalf of the city and Encore. And what I was presenting today would probably be most appropriate. But that's okay, thank you.
We get, we get into those changes.
Thank you.
I'm wanting to just, you can fast.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I had a couple of questions and comments. Thank you for your time. First point is on page two. In respect to middle of the page, the city has also been in discussions with Delta on the T I D, on the T I D Transportation Improvement District. Just wanted to ask, you know, what that status was. To your knowledge, it's still kind of pending, under evaluation, et cetera. I think it's been in the run for almost a year now, in terms of potential discussion, et cetera.
Yes, we, within the last few months, we completed a rough build-out analysis of the city using basic zoning and some assumptions on the build-out of various properties within the city. We have yet to, and to back up, one of the features of the T I D is that you have to have enough development potential in order for the T I D to really make a difference, for it to really be worthwhile to make that substantial investment in resources, both staff and planning, to do a full T I D report. So you have to have enough development potential in order to have enough development that will be contributing to the T I D fund to really make a difference with Delta. We have not had that, we have not presented that build-out analysis to Delta. We wanted to do some more internal vetting of it, but we just, we haven't done that yet.
Thank you. And for the record, and for those that are in the audience and possibly listening, what Mr. Rogers is talking about in respect to development, growth in our city, there are different thresholds that will trigger essentially maybe a traffic study, if you will. And sometimes with these projects that are taken into the, and the Transportation Improvement District, correct me if I'm wrong, would encapsulate and look at, not necessarily an individual project and its potential impact, but several projects and the impact on in particular everything. Is that, is that correct?
That, that is correct. At the, at the end of a long T I D planning process, and the district is adopted by the local and Delta, developers will not be required to do a traffic impact study, which is very localized, but they will simply be required to contribute to a fund that is based on the T I D plan, for which there is a capital improvement plan associated with it. So there's a lot of modeling done, and then projects are developed based on the future predicted build-out of the municipality that will mitigate the traffic impacts of those developments. So again, instead of doing a, a traffic study that looks at two or three intersections right down the street, the developers, after a T I D, will be contributing to this fund that will be, that will go into a capital improvement plan that will contribute to Delta's C I P. So, and then, another benefit of the T I D is that those projects get a higher priority in Delta's C T P, if you're, if you're in a Transportation Improvement District. That's a solid transportation plan.
Thank you, sir. Then on page four, G thirteen, definitely appreciate your efforts and the Planning Commission's efforts in recognizing the playground at Battery Park. Toward the end of last year, and, you know, the whole year to date, have also made initiatives, and it was referenced by Miss Tantillo earlier today in regards to the Delaware River Trail. So I think, and my personal recommendation would be that we have a reference to the Delaware River Trail. It speaks to transportation, it speaks to walkable communities, bikeable communities, exercise, et cetera, that are referenced in the 2009 Comprehensive Plan. It's something that's needed for communities outside of the historic core. It's also a reference in the 2020 Plan as a need. Mr. Charlie, this is one of the goals of those plans, and we're actively working towards. So if a reference to that could be included, I would appreciate it. And then also, on page five, in recognizing the land use that we have coming our way, I was wondering if, thinking there simply should be a reference that when this approximately thousand units get built, we will shift from a majority homeowner community to a majority renter community. And once those build-outs happen, we're 3.1 square miles. We don't have necessarily that many open lots, right? We're effectively maxed out. So if a reference to that with the influx or growth of the thousand units, the city of Newcastle will shift from a majority homeowner community to a renter community, I think is substantial and should be noted.
I second that request. I think it's about fifty-four percent. I like the increase that you mentioned, thirty-six percent. I think we moved to about fifty-four percent, renter of, versus owner of, at that point. And my only other question there was on the same section, paragraph after, sorry, to respond to, if you could share with the Council the presentation that was shared by Miss Horton on housing affordability, that would be great, just for my education. I've been thinking about this in general, how are residents who have fixed income days out of the, you know, home into the, you know, smaller unit that they could afford? So it'd be great to see, you know, their recommendations. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
And the, we were approving for this, so the...
Oh, it's a hit land, so from the... So we are simply approving that the report we submitted to the state.
With the recommendations that were discussed.
With, okay, and that would be with the suggested additions and corrections?
Correct.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this report with the additions and corrections discussed this evening? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is Resolution 2025 dash thirty-eight, which I guess I should read first, and then Mr. Rogers can tell us about, or? Do you want to do it the other way around? There's subdivision, the re-subdivision.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, I looked at it briefly, I believe Mr. Bergstrom did the review, but it's a, it's a standard re-subdivision plan that is eliminating a lot line. This is the most simplest and least impactful subdivisions that one can have. That is, when one is eliminating a lot line, there's very little to review in these types of subdivisions. So it's basically dividing two parcels into one by looking at existing lot line.
So this resolution is barely to permit the city court to, to allow a sign-off and allow the subdivision, re-subdivision to be reported? It isn't, you're not approving this subdivision, you're just allowing it to be reported?
But this, this re-subdivision has no impact on any surrounding property? And it doesn't change any requirements about what may be built or not built and so forth?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
In fact, I think the extinguishment of this lot line extinguishes a non-conformity, right?
Yes, for far zoning is concerned, the building's gradually built, the lot line itself, for zoning purposes, the lots are already combined, if, if it's combined. So this is just clearing itself.
And the smaller part of this, to the right, as you look at it, is the one being, the one to the right, as we look at it, smaller portion being re-subbed, is it driving?
No, there are two, there are two lots are being combined.
I understand, but the one to the right is just the drive, that's what I'm saying, like, currently.
Well, it's got, it's got a couple of buildings on it, far one billion, another billion, and it's up in the back. But...
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bergstrom or Mr. Rogers? Then I will read the resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, a resolution approving a subdivision plan prepared for Newcastle Self-Storage LLC for a property known as 300 West Seventh Street. Whereas Newcastle Self-Storage LLC has applied to the Council of Newcastle for a subdivision plan approved for the properties known as tax parcels, parcel numbers twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash three nine six, and twenty-one zero one four point zero zero dash five five four, within the city limits. And whereas the building official has reviewed the application under the terms of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same, and there, has therefore recommended to the city council that the subdivision plan be approved as a re-subdivision as defined by the subdivision regulations. And whereas the council determines the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of a re-subdivision, as shown on the attached Exhibit A. Now therefore be resolved that the application of the Newcastle Self-Storage LLC for approval of the subdivision plan for 300 West Seventh Street, parcels twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash three nine six, and twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash five five four, within the city limits, as shown hereby on a plat prepared by the Palsa Company dated June sixth, 2025, and attached hereto as Exhibit A. Reflecting such subdivision is approved, and such plat shall be entitled to be recorded in the Office of the Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subifier shall record the subject plan within forty-five days of the date of this resolution, and inform the business building official of the exact place of recordation within that office. Failure to record the subject plan within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-eight?
Motion approved.
A second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is, or the resolution is stopped. Thank you, Mr. Berkstrom and Mr. Rogers.
Can I personally make the exception?
Yes, thank you. Okay, now I've got to jump back up to old business. And this is a discussion and possible vote on ordinance five five three, which is to amend the code and establish chapters two two-two financial matters and chapters, and article one regarding the establishment of a budget stabilization fund and chapter two two-two, article two, regarding the establishment of a capital and infrastructure fund. We have had prior discussions on this and we decided to defer it until after we have completed the budget process. I'm going to make a suggestion that we have established a finance committee and it seems that their expertise might be helpful in evaluating this resolution. And I'm just going to throw out the suggestion that we defer this further until we give it to the newly constituted finance committee as sort of their first assignment to take advantage of the expertise that's going to be available to us once this committee gets going. And then receive their report before we make a decision. There's, you know, we've gone back and forth of where the money should come from to establish the fund and how it should be maintained and how it should be used and how it should be replenished. And I think those are all issues that our finance committee might have some important insights. So I'll just throw that out there as part of the discussion.
Thank you for saying that. I, I, I agree that, you know, finance committee, when they start working, would be qualified and discuss this and other finance matters. I, I do want to say that we started talking about this way before we just adopted finance committees. I would just say that this was even tabled before we even had that presented to the council. So I would like to still leave this on the table and hopefully we vote on this tonight because councilperson Madaway and I have spent some time since the last budget workshop to accommodate the changes, prepare the examples and presentations so that we can, you know, not waste that effort on, on behalf of two of us as well. So I just wanted to recognize that.
I certainly recognize your effort and I don't think it would be wasted if we also got input from the finance committee before we made a decision. That's all I'm saying. I commend you on your initiative in putting this together and the effort you've put into, you know, adjusting to our quest, answering our questions as to how it might be utilized, making changes suggested by other members of council. None of that is wasted if we get other advice before we make a final decision on it. That's my only point.
I, I, I know, but then when I'm, you know, I respectfully, when this is asked to be put on agenda, I would like to know that at once I'm not actually spending time away from my kids and preparing for this meeting. So, and then just to be told now that to table it's up, that's, I guess what I'm saying. In retrospect, I would, I would prefer that's communicated earlier because I do, in my spare time, would prefer, much rather, you know, do anything else and
Well, I'm sure.
Make changes to the ordinance.
There's other items that I know you're concerned about on two items.
Yeah, absolutely. But if, if you allow, I would like to highlight the changes we made
Sure, go for it.
You know, briefly provide examples. Thank you. So if you go to the second page, you will see the cumulative balance to be maintained for all funds. We have made a conversation about, talking about goal of maintaining certain, certain amount of water we're proposing. So we have changed the language there that says city shall, city shall aim to maintain a, you know, a total of the balance for budget stabilization fund equal to at least fifty percent. So that talks about, there's an intent and goal to maintain that, but no requirement for that. That's, that part is strictly now and replaced by this. And then on the bottom of that sentence, we have just added a, a word, reassessed that the balance is reassessed every fiscal year so that it's just kind of, that is what's happening most likely in the budget workshop meetings in June. On June, we have done the same language for capital infrastructure fund as well, but obviously the different amount is there, five hundred thousand dollars to be maintained. In, in section two two-two dash four, on the next page right there, expanding a fund, we have added something we haven't discussed at a meeting, but councilperson Madaway pointed out in our code that mayor of our city is authorized in the chapter twenty-eight dash three of municipal code to declare emergency as well. We, we understand that it would probably mask the emergency for a governor, president or somebody, but we wanted to add that in there as well in case there's a different type of emergency that will allow for these funds to be expended as a, you know, under the subsection A, natural disaster, public emergency section. Furthermore, on the next page then, under the part B, we have added increased expenditures after revenues of in period of reduced revenues or increased expenditures to, to allow use of this fund for budget stabilization. And then this was already added before in part two, we are recommending five percent of the, of the operating budget to be, you know, allowed use of, of this fund. And then twenty percent of that to be for personnel. The other stuff to be noted, now we can go a couple pages down, stuff and ready, you can see on page first tip at this point. I'll go to method of funding that we have. You can see the changes that I mentioned about the accumulated balance, the city shall aim to maintain equal to at least five hundred thousand dollars. And then just the method of funding talks about seventy-five percent of excess revenues being added to this fund. And I think that's basically a, and we just added up on adoption of these formats on the section two and section three on the last page of here as, as kind of the timeline when the, the deposit would be made, which, you know, may everyone have to be there, make sure that's kind of understood. So I wanted to just go into a summary. So we were asked at the last meeting as well to provide some examples. So we can skip the elements of B S F and go to page B S F summary before councilperson Madaway provides examples. One more? I believe it's David? Go up to the table? Yeah, so I looked at our fifteen years worth of audits available on our website and find out that, I found out there's about two point eight million of surplus over those fifteen years. Once you exclude two large, one time revenue items that were added, ARPA, Delaware Street Law, I didn't want those to skew the, the annual surplus or, you know, so, so that, I hope you understand that a lot later once I start talking about how I, you know, came up with some of these things. But I didn't think that was appropriate to be used for a, you know, the occasion of these funds necessarily. But the, the way kind of, I wanted this chart to show that if we're, if this existed fifty years ago, that the subdivision fund would have eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the, in the fund at this point and capital improvement fund, infrastructure fund would have two point, a little shy of two point five million at this point, based on that. Without ARPA, obviously, so the funds would be probably even larger, you know, with, with the current ARPA and other revenues that we have over time. But I intentionally excluded those from there. So if we go to the next page, my point there was that I want to tell the council that, you know, we need at least, based on ordinance, how, how we're talking about six months of revenues to have kind of in this, in this fund to, you know, we need at least three point five million currently, likely closer to four millions going forward as, as the new budget that was adopted and, you know, annual increases we're going to have to cover six months of the operation. So, but our average annual surplus that I just mentioned, you know, is about hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. So even if we put twenty-five percent of that, like it proposed here, aside for this fund annually, it would take nearly a century to get us to four million dollars that we're talking. So just I wanted to sit with everybody here that it would take us a hundred years almost to get to four million dollars if we had the average surplus revenues that we have currently over the last fifteen years. So I'm not making up, I'm just using audit and records minus the, you know, ARPA funds that there was, you know, funded. That's why I think the initial four million dollar transfer is essential and fiscal responsible to start us off and build this while we are having funds to, 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 to put aside and restrict them for budget budget stabilization purpose. I think the rainy day fund or budget stabilization fund is most effective when it's built before it's born so that we're not, you know, at the point where we are expending these funds already and then having to figure out how do we, you know, help the budget or not increase the tax by using this fund or, or also replenish that to six months. So I, I, I think we're lucky to have the money now, not from taxes, but from just prior fiscal discipline that, that we have over the last fifteen years. And this ordinance just ensures that we protect that money for that use. So it would just kind of be moved from unrestricted funds that was shown earlier on the market intention to restrict that under budget stabilization fund line. And then the last point there that I want to touch before, I gave the microphone to councilperson Madaway is that if we look at a five percent annual profit for our budget, which is about a little under four hundred thousand dollars that was mentioned in budget workshops, you know, that, that this is the perfect time to start putting money aside because even with what we're proposing here, we probably would not. It would be at minimum required six months, fifteen years from now, right? So we'll probably still fall short. So that's kind of one of the things that, why I think there's, you know, not urgency to do this, but do it while we have funds before we're required to make even tougher decisions in future. So I'm going to, you know, there, there is a slide here that shows the table of fifty-five, twenty percent. If you can get to that, just for, I think councilperson Del asked a lot of it. Take it. Let me just remove this.
Okay.
Okay. So basically what this just shows before, I, I switched, I didn't say that I was done talking, but basically this shows about what those three percentages during the budget will come out. So it would be based off of the FY twenty-five budget, seven point two seven million, so fifty percent of that would be three point five million that I just mentioned. Max annual withdrawal, based on this ordinance would be five percent, which is three hundred fifty-one thousand roughly. And then the five, twenty percent of the five percent for personnel negotiations or personnel stat would be about seventy thousand, you know, that, that, that's just one of the, I think that, that was asked in one of the meetings. So councilperson Madaway has looked through some of the city council meetings in the past and currently to kind of identify some examples for us to kind of look and discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson. Small question. So Newcastle budget stabilization examples?
That would be all your staple, I'm sorry, not staple. But yeah, I got staple examples. I'm not sure that's, yeah.
Yes. So as a pretext, the concepts of budget stabilization, capital improvement fund were first introduced in April at the conclusion of city election, but was first imagined earlier in the year as something that was necessary. Budget stabilization funds and capital improvement funds are things that are in existence at the federal level, at state levels, county levels, in many municipalities smaller than us and larger than us have them. The pretext additionally is that sixteen years of not raising property taxes and relying upon those streams to balance budgets in the midst of revenues that are outside of our control, that can be impacted by trends or market fluctuations like stock market, inflation, et cetera. And over the years, the city's fixed expenses have significantly increased. Budget stabilization funds and capital improvement funds are ones that have the support of the city administrator. They're taught in the public policy, educational spheres, et cetera. So with that, I'll just look to some examples that were requested during the budget meetings. So these examples are real examples of things that did happen here in the city of Newcastle. So in respect to the budget stabilization fund, in June twenty-three, two thousand nine, they had a projection of two hundred sixty thousand dollars. And this was called from the minutes that are on the city website from these specific dates referenced. They had a projection of two hundred sixty thousand dollars in property transfer taxes. At that meeting, they indicated that the city was a hundred thousand dollars short. Additionally, they had a projection of sixty thousand dollars of investment interest. And at that meeting, they were forty thousand dollars short of that mark. Looking to today's budget that was just passed at the end of June, the budget is seven point, seven million five hundred ninety thousand six hundred and forty-six. So in respect to the ordinance on page four, to, to the budget stabilization fund and B, the five percent mark is referenced in regards to monies that can be taken. So five percent of the seven point five million dollar figure referenced in our current budget is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty cents. So the question becomes, if we were in the situation that they were in in two thousand nine, how would we solve that problem making reference and use of this budget stabilization fund? And the answers are on page four. B, use during the period of reduced revenues or increased expenditures. Under B one, funds accumulated in the budget stabilization fund may be expended to fund the city's annual operating budget during the period of reduced revenues or increased expenditures. That certainly is the case referenced in June twenty-three, two thousand nine. Additionally, number two, funds expected from the budget stabilization fund in any given year shall not exceed five percent of the city's operating budget. So if we went in two thousand nine, when we had to solve this case, five percent again is a three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar figure and they were short a hundred and forty thousand dollars as of June twenty-three, two thousand nine, just a few days before, you know, the close of the books. Then at that same meeting, June twenty-third, two thousand nine, they said that they projected almost five point four million dollars in revenue, but the expected as of that day was four point six million dollars. And that is very daunting and very scary. And that was an eight hundred thousand dollar difference. Again, looking at the current budget in two thousand and twenty-six, the five percent figure, and how would we solve with the use of the budget stabilization fund if we were short the hundred thousand dollars, right? So again, the five percent figure is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So that's certainly two hundred thousand dollars is in excess of that. But under that same page four, where it says notwithstanding the provisions of the section to the contrary, at any time the city council may deem necessary and appropriate, the remaining balance may be expended from the budget stabilization fund by a majority of the members of elected city council. So there's an option there and flexibility there to provide coverage in unexpected times. And finally, in regards to May fifteenth, two thousand twenty budget, there were discussions had about revenues being impacted by COVID. And a decision was made to reduce the property tax line for upcoming years. Reference. And then we see that they reduced the line to two million seven fifteen and that was a difference of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. If that happened today, that is below the five percent threshold. So there are several mechanisms within the budget stabilization to provide coverage for that. I do believe that the time is now to do this. We have several large expenditures coming up later on this year and we need to govern ourselves accordingly. I recognize and respect and applaud the desire to create the finance committee. My understanding is that their call to action is to meet at least quarterly. So I, I don't know if they're going to meet too many times before the end of the year. And we all know that we're at unprecedented times, to say the least, in this country, in this world, and we need to have some stabilization.
And for the last point on budget stabilization, if you can go to the table, one pager, I can explain the, if you keep going, this, it says FY twenty-six, FY thirty-six fiscal year. I view the same table and format of notes that Osho View does as well to in their most recent FY twenty-six plan and assumed a lot of the similar assumptions from, from their plan that talks about deposits in column A from excess revenue for us would be twenty-five percent of excess revenue. In this case, it's about forty-three thousand a year. Now, I didn't, I, I didn't come up with these just randomly, but basically out of those fifteen years that I took up audit, I took five, ten to fifteen years averages and about my last five years were the smallest, a hundred and seventy-five. So I said, let's use the smallest, the average is a hundred eighty-nine, but I just wanted to, you know, go with the smallest to make it to, you know, go with the smallest to make it, the worst case scenario, I guess, really. So that's kind of annual contribution. I skipped every third year, you could see zero, FY twenty-five, thirty-one, and twenty-thirty-four, and kind of realistic scenario years where you don't have a, you know, surplus, surplus revenue. And that was also one of those things that I looked at from history, twelve out of the last fifteen years, we had excess revenue, so three years out of fifteen, we did not. So that was just replicating that. You can put it back to back, doesn't matter, it's just the same, that's just a simulation of that. I'll skip to C, that's just a reserve annual that we're putting in as an initial fund right now that we're talking about. Projected interest income, column B, basically, that was based up for the Ocean View had a contractor for this, for their project that estimated a five percent return on their investment, so I used the same assumption in ours. This was just completed in May, I believe, of this year. So I was just, you know, using that same methodology. So that would be like, that's a balance, balance at the end of fiscal year prior, that's the maximum two hundred and two is off of the FY, for FY twenty-seven is FY twenty-six balance, that's four million forty-two thousand, all the way to your right there in the top, if we were to, you know, finish this fiscal year with contribution, with the surplus as well as the four million contribution. And then the projected budget shorefalls, I kind of made a logic in a sense of the years of there's most surplus, that would be a need for BSF, basically. And I just maxed out that at five percent. Basically, I took current budget and added five percent inflation to the budget every single year. And at the point three years from now, that's four hundred twenty thousand, I don't know, four hundred and eighteen, but I rounded those things up to some numbers adjustable easier, four eighty-five, thirty-one, and five sixteen, FY thirty-four. So that was kind of the rationale behind that, because we were talking about four hundred thousand dollars, so I figured it's about five percent, it's less than five percent. That was the same assumption in a budget in Ocean View, so that kind of matched our growth as well. But the striking thing, I took their balance at the end of fiscal year, FY thirty-six, you can see all the right values, would be five point one. This is obviously all simulation based on historical data and the stuff from Ocean View assumptions with five percent interest as well as budget growth. At that point, if our budget continues to raise at five percent, that would be fifty percent at that point would be six point two million, right? Our budget at that point would be twelve point four million. Obviously, that, I know the deal of future holds, but that's just kind of to kind of showcase that even that, with three years, getting to BSF contributing interest, you know, being constant, we would still be short, you know, one point one million at that point, of that six months goal. So I think that was the urgency to me when I saw those numbers in a sense, like, we have to figure this out and, and keep revaluing every year and figure out, how will we get that, reevaluate what I've got this year and year out, and see how we can meet that minimum, hopefully, of six months that we can keep there, grow it, and then, you know, be able to lean on that when we need it in a tough, tough fiscal years. So that's all for BSF before we go to capital infrastructure. I would like, you know, you okay with pointing to columns before we go to capital, because I want to, I'm sure it's, it is a lot, it's honestly a lot, you know, in general, but...
I just think it's a good one, separate. Even maybe consider it voting separately.
Absolutely.
No, I'd like to do the budget stabilization fund, I think you loosened it up to give any council, not just us, but any future councils some flexibility, and I'd like the emergency provisions.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Like, one of the questions we've had reoccurring was, you know, potentially this is limiting councils, you know, access to this, but there's, as Councilperson Mather mentioned, it's really council who can change this at any point and say, you know, if we want this to be a hundred percent or twenty, or I don't know, and then just later on adopt it based on a need that you can use that fund. So it's not really, during that, it's really more prescribing that this, you know, is strategic in a sense that we want to make sure at least six months is what we have put aside for this, this very similar set, but, you know. I want to reiterate for same stuff, the same stuff that I was talking about, I think that the examples might be, it's a similar structure of, you know, funding and all that stuff, so I'm just gonna pass the microphone to my colleague here to walk through some examples, and then we can talk about that, so.
Yeah, thank you. And one of the things I just want to reiterate is that we obviously know we have monthly meetings, but throughout the year, we do have a mid-year budget review. And then toward the end of the year, we have several meetings. So those certainly can be additional touchpoints or access points in which councils at any said moment in time has the ability to review the numbers, perhaps make adjustments to ordinance, revoke it, add to it, et cetera. In respect to capital improvement fund examples, I didn't like what Ms. Tintella said earlier in regards to the reality of all of our bond bill requests not being answered. But it is the reality of the fact of the matter that unfortunately, the city of Newcastle's capital improvement projects historically have not been done unless they were funded mostly by the bond bill. And so we want to get to the point to where we can self-fund and where we can prepare to match perhaps grant funding opportunities, et cetera. We want to thank the work that the prior councils have done to get us to this point, but we want to take the time and carry that forward. In respect to capital improvement fund examples, again, examples of things that happened here in the city of Newcastle, most recently a few weeks ago, we understand that there was a need to allocate seventy-five thousand dollars for an investment into two-two-two Dollar Street. May twenty-fifth, at the twenty-twenty-three budget meeting, council used three hundred fifty thousand dollars of ARPA fund for police cars, and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of ARPA was used toward the purchase of a garbage truck, which, again, I think are all worthy and deserving things. And these were taken all from the minutes that are online as of these dates. June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars was added to the Boothhouse, excuse me, Boothhurst Road project to complete mill and overlay, two hundred thousand dollars of that came out of the general fund. So this capital improvement fund will get us to the point to where we're not necessarily taking monies out of the general fund to fund needed and just and prudent capital improvements. May fifteenth, twenty-twenty, city paid off two tabos for approximately forty-three thousand dollars. I imagine they did an analysis of cash on hand versus what they were going to project to use it for versus the amount of interest that they were going to pay, and made the analytical decision to pay them off. Again, I understand that. May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, thirty thousand dollars was added, again, toward the end of that fiscal year, excuse me, during the budget meetings, for storm drainage line due to catch fixtures, repair, and additional invoices were expected. So that figure seemed to go above the thirty thousand dollar figure. We know that we are definitely at the eye of the storm in regards to coastal flooding and sea level rise, and we certainly can expect to have to do additional line items for storm drainage, et cetera. November thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, the city council affirmed via this resolution to finance a street sweeper with a deposit of thirty-five thousand dollars, and they went on to finance it over a period of time for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. April tenth, two thousand eighteen, city council and the trustees of Newcastle comment entered into a memorandum of understanding for forty quarterly payments of fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars principal interest that was generously paid by the trustees for the Delaware Street improvements. Again, we thank the trustees for all that they do, but we want to be self-sufficient and get to the point where we can self-fund projects. November ninth, twenty-sixteen, council via resolution two-zero-one-six dash five-one decided to earmark reserve and reserve four hundred thousand dollars out of a four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollar one-time payment received from an unexpected royalty tax transfer that they were going to allocate for the design, engineering, permitting, and construction of street and relative utility infrastructure improvements associated with Delaware Street. So again, I think these are all great examples of what prior councils and administration have done. We want to carry it forward. We know that we live in an old town, it's going to need a lot of work, onward work, and we want it to be the very best for the residents now and the residents for generations to come.
And just before discussion for this and the prior ordinance, I wanted to switch page there one more time for that same, similar table. I won't go into much in details, and because we, it's a similar assumption for BSF, just different percentages. So for deposits lined, you're looking seventy-five percent of excess revenue, so this is much higher than number thirty thousand for your, I made same assumptions about, you know, you can see the three years that have zero contributions and the interest is significantly lower just because of entire balance, the stop rate is lower, obviously, so you'll see, you know, kind of offsets in both of those. And I, when Councilperson Mather provided these examples, they were kind of really barely, you know, varied from forty thousand to three hundred thousand dollar projects. So I kind of, you know, took that total or so, or several examples, and assumed, let's say, there's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in addition to bond bill and all the other money that we already spent on capital, you know, projects that could be, you know, put aside in our budget, and that's about one point five million over ten years, you know, to simulate this, obviously, this can be changed, this is just as an example here, but just to kind of show the fund would go from about two million to about two point seven million in those ten years, while still funding one point five million dollars for our city, you know, surplus revenues and interest earned there, capital projects and repairs that are outlined. The important thing about SIF, I think, that I'm excited about, the notes really is the five-year plan that, you know, city admin presents to the council and kind of identifies those projects that are on the horizon, you know, so we can kind of plan as a council in general, you know, what are the investments our city needs, and, you know, so we can kind of figure out what needs to go, which grant one needs to go, you know, put aside. And SIF is much different than BSF in a funny sense that while it says it's seventy-five percent of excess revenue, it also says, as we review the plan every year, council can choose to do whatever, right, to say, oh, we deem this very important, so in addition to revenue, we'll move X amount more money over to this funds of fund, project A, B, C of interest. So that's just kind of biggest highlight there. The notes are adjusted for, obviously, our examples, a lot of them are similar to BSF some, through them just because, for the time, but those are, I believe, are...
One other thing, that the capital improvement fund is dovetailed into the capital improvement plan, can't have a plan without capital dollars. The twenty-twenty comprehensive plan that the mayor, city council, and planning commission signed off on makes reference to a capital improvement plan. And again, the capital improvement plan as a role and strategy for the city cannot happen and will not be successful without capital dollars.
I hope there's no comments.
I think the only comment I had, again, I like what you did, I like the flexibility. I would say, and I think it could be done anyway, but I don't think it would hurt to use the sections from expended funds under the budget stabilization fund to use in the capital improvement fund, just so it is clear, there's emergency, all funds are available.
Okay.
If you need an actual emergency or something, we all, everything's available.
Okay, absolutely.
Other than that, I don't have any other comments I can say.
So you're proposing an amendment to section...
I'll try and find it again. Expending of funds twenty-two, two-two-two dash four, should be added to... Two-two-two dash ten, correct?
Yeah, so I was going through, trying to, like, add, like, some natural disaster expenses, and it wouldn't, definitely, it wouldn't fit nicely in the definition that's there, but I just think we ought to make it apparent.
And before, before making a motion, sorry.
I'm just saying, making the suggestion.
Before I make a motion, do you think, make A and B section, that was the same, start with natural disaster, and then B being the period of reduced revenues, and then follow with the text that we have currently, and A just being copied over from the budget stabilization? If that makes sense? All right, so the two-two-two dash, that would then have A and B sections, current tax would be under B, the new section would be added under A, I suppose, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
So two-two-two dash ten, we have additions comparable to two-two-two dash four.
A-one.
A-one.
And two, and three, yeah, yeah. With the change of BSF to CIF, obviously.
Right, yeah, so maybe.
Do you also want B then?
Say it again.
Would you also like B then?
I think B would be the current language, right? But let's see. Oh, B-one could be there because it talks about period of reduced revenues or increase expenditures, yeah. And then when you go into the current, so I would... May I try to motion? I'll make a motion to amend ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash five-five-three, section two-two-two dash ten, to add section A, one, two, and three, and section B-one from two-two-two dash four, expending of funds from BSF, followed by the current language under two-two-two dash ten. I think we need roll call for amendment.
First, we need a second.
Actually, yes.
Second is a second. Do we need a roll call for amendments, or could amendments be a voice for the private suggestion? Okay, Ms. Britt, would you call the roll for this amendment, please?
I'm sorry, uh, please, go second with that.
Um, Mr. Zell.
Thank you. Council President Suzanne Sauter.
Yes.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Yes.
Councilperson Mary Zubaka.
Yes.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Mather.
Yes, that was intended.
I have a question about your chart from the capital and infrastructure fund. I misunderstood, I thought you said you could project the capital expenditures at one point five million a year?
A hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
I took several examples that was provided, and they were all over the place, and kind of...
Okay, and you project the same amount each year, you don't...
Oh, no, it was more, I had to throw forty-three, one, comma, two, three hundred in the other, ten in the other.
But you're projecting, what I'm saying is for a period of nine years, you're projecting the same amount of capital repairs, you're not doing any inflationary calculations.
No, I'm not projecting, I'm not projecting, but that was just a example, the simplest example I can provide, it's really depends on the plan that gets adopted and provided by city administrator, this number could be fifty thousand start with. Currently, we have a hundred twenty-five set aside in the fund and spent, I don't know, seven a year or something, so I really don't know, it really depends on the year, right?
So these are just placeholders?
These are just placeholders, just to see how the fund would work out. I presume one year could be five hundred thousand dollars, the other year we would need zero, next year we would need three hundred, I really don't know, it really is... The idea behind SIF is really what we as a council say on that list is a priority, and what do we think we can actually do in, in addition to what is already being funded through bonds, through different grants, through general fund already. So I think that it's kind of like a, what else can it fit in there that, for example, on the bond this, this year was not approved? Let's take, example, the streets, but we can't do all six or eight, whatever the surplus, but top two, that were the worst condition, can we do that? You know, and then have that conversation, that amount is whatever, they run, and then we say, yes, and, you know, we approve it and go forward. So it really is, it was a tougher situation to do in a sense of that D and E column, because I had no idea what to put there, because every year, as you guys saw in those examples in the page before, you're talking about seventy thousand, two-seventy, three-fifty, forty-three, sorry, thirty, two-twenty-six, and so if it kind of, I just...
I do have one question, in your research, does anybody know if the city's ever floated bonds for capital improvements? Or do we even have the ability, does anybody know if we have that ability?
We have the ability, it was given a few years ago, but I don't think we have it.
And if it's over a certain amount, there has to be a referendum, I think?
There was something in the minutes in two thousand nine about that, but it's a couple of years ago.
Something like if it was over, I could revolve over five hundred thousand, maybe.
I don't remember.
It was, yeah, it was, it was, it was a similar situation with the budget where they were trying to do bonds for, that sounds about right, Amal, that's me, or is that true?
And kind of the idea is, obviously, if you have a, we'll just take Delaware Street, for example, if we had to do that, if you did have a capital reserve, and we had the ability to float bonds, then you, out of the capital infrastructure fund, you could make the interest, the bond payments, you know what I mean? So you can get a large project on, but...
Absolutely.
on, but it's just a...
Absolutely, yeah, for sure, I mean, this could be all for one bigger project that we identify and say, this is what we're trying to do with it, so it could be ten small projects. It really is the council to kind of choose and prioritize it.
I like that example, Councilperson Day, that you can use some of your money to help you and kind of leverage it without giving it up all at once.
Well, I think some of the large road projects, if we are going to have to take them on, we're going to have to do something like that. I don't think we're going to see a lot of delve-down funding for the road projects that we're looking at. I know, as for examples of this, you guys did an amazing job in pulling it together that helped me understand the actual ordinance itself, so I appreciate all the hard work you did to put in for that, so thank you.
Yes, I agree, thank you.
Well, thank you for challenging this, you know, to think about it differently. I will commend also news, SIF, or whatever they call their capital infrastructure plans, a hundred pages, went through it, it's amazing in its design, but these tables were possible because they were, you know, replica of that study that they just finished, both capital and infrastructure, but also the finance department, but with the outside vendor for their financing, you know, and so did help to look at, you know, other municipalities, how we're dealing with this, but also being our neighbors to understand what other places are knowing how they're, you know, leading to this work as well, so.
And did you choose, as you view, because they're the only ones who had such a plan?
Oh, no, there's, I believe, we talked about different municipalities that have capital infrastructure plans. I chose theirs because I, for different reasons, because I fell in love with their budget system, and this is nerd in me, but as I was learning about the city for different projects, I learned that they are recipients of a budget award, outstanding budget award every year for several years straight, so I, I've already contacted their staff to meet with our staff and myself included, to, you know, see what they're using, and so we can kind of replicate those efforts in general, but in that search, I came across this and really, you know, thought this is a great way, some of the features that their plan has, the document has this twenty years' worth of taxes, so they list out every single change, they list out all the business fee changes, they, you know, there's so much history within that document, I know it's hard to build out, I know this is, you know, a task in itself, but it's great to see from transparency, you know, and like, as a council first to see, when did we last do X, Y, and Z, and it says it there, or it says, we are seeing reduction projected in the next five years on this, and I thought those trends stuff and historical stuff that they had there was something we should look for more as well, so hopefully this one the first steps that provides us some of the trend information about capital infrastructure improvements that we can start looking as a council, and we do it, but this just kind of makes it more formal, in a sense, so.
So if, if, now, this ordinance sets this up for the next fiscal year, but just, again, looking at what we have now, if we were doing that this year, you're proposing taking a total of six million dollars for, for the stabilization fund and two for the Capital Improvement Fund, from unrestricted funds, right, left at the end, at the end, as of the end of now, this current fiscal year, but as of the end of the last fiscal year, our unrestricted funds were about eight point four million, so if we took six, then we only have two point four left, assuming that's roughly the same next year. Is that sufficient money for sort of normal day-to-day expenses that come up? Without having...
I can't speak to that, but the assumption about unrestricted funds moving, six million of it moving to restricted funds, so restricted would go from two point eight to six point eight unrestricted, money markets, our retention would be moving from eight point one to two point one, you know, and I do want to just make clarification that we would make those, if, you know, hopefully after this, we can vote on this ordinance, if deposit may affect it of this ordinance, but the, so it would start, we would hopefully see this next month reflected in our treasures report, but the FY twenty-seven is about using this, so like, basically, as we go into the next budget year, it's a matter of like, as FY twenty-seven comes next year, we'll be relying, BASF automatic, but that's just what it's saying, or state SIF, so like...
So we would move the money from unrestricted to restricted, if this passes, that would happen right away?
Yeah, yeah, in a section two and three, I believe, let me see.
And Ms. Tantillo, in your experience and just sort of best practice, is two point four million in unrestricted funds sufficient for the operation of the city?
Yeah, I'd have to look a little bit further into it, but the, you know, as the revenue comes in, that would, you know, grow, but maybe this is, you know, after the audit, so the typically, just like looking at the calendar and the, to pull projection of when the audit would be here, you would have, you know, a lot of those tax revenues for that fiscal year, that year and at that time, so I think that would be...
So we wouldn't actually be making this movement of funds immediately, we would be waiting until the fiscal year's over, in the sense of all the invoices have come in and all the revenue has begun?
Yeah, because this has it...
And we would also wait until the completion of the audit?
Yes, it says it's, you know, later than two weeks long, the adoption of the audit.
So that wouldn't be till, at the best, sometime in the fall, probably early in twenty twenty-six, is when we typically get our auditor's report, is either February, March, right?
Yeah, it was a little earlier this year, but I guess...
January, February, maybe, so we would not be moving these funds from unrestricted to restricted now, we wouldn't be doing it until the audit's completed.
That's what it says for BASF, and then...
I do want to say that that's the excess revenue is waiting for, and not the initial deposit.
Oh, okay.
So the excess revenue, twenty-five percent for BASF, and seventy-five was the audit potential because of our conversation last time at the budget workshop, because we were, I was talking about the June thirty of reports that we're seeing right now, using that, but then we were told, but there's still stuff happening until the audit, and that's why I used audio numbers for this stuff, this time around, to show those numbers instead, but that, that's what refers to the hundred eighty-nine, let's say, the historical number, I'm talking about average, that would be split into two funds after it's audited, and we say this is the surplus this year, as we got the audit, we would know that line there would say...
I have concerns with this year's initial funding, just because we have increased the taxes, and we've already made changes to interest, so we've already kind of discussed the possibility of people not paying their taxes on time and not having that income when we typically receive it, so I don't know that we should move to fund it right now, you know?
So I think this would...
Does this ordinance require that movement right away, or does it leave it open to when we move it?
So, section two and three would have to be amended, the last section is upon adoption of this ordinance, says shall be allocated from city markets, money market retention, provision up on adoption of this ordinance.
But two, 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 says for FY twenty-seven, so I think...
Sorry, it's not, so the...
That's to start taking the fifty percent of the excess.
Yeah, that's the excess.
That's what, it doesn't specify, where, what section?
At the end of the ordinance, like the last feature, so section two is in three.
An initial deposit, probably, upon adoption.
Yes, that would happen to be a reflection to reflect that.
The first question that I had, recognizing the nuance of this year, and these numbers four and two, they were thoughtful, to the extent that we had information known to us. Would your comfortability change if those numbers were changed to three million and one million, right now?
For...
Running. I would say one point three, or whatever, because we're putting that aside regardless, I thought, like for...
Like three and one and a half?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, change of comfortability levels of four and a half.
Or do you think it's better to wait after the mid-year budget review?
Yeah, I would feel...
I know with the taxes starting in September and going through December, you know what I mean, we probably, because we are also giving residents a break in November and December, I believe, we may not seek some of the tax revenue until January, so that's why I just...
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, to wait until mid-year budget review, just so we have a better handle on what we're actually, where we're actually at financially, and the income that we, most of the income, you know, is in the front end of the year, and at that point, we would have a better idea of what we're actually going to receive at that point.
The other point I wanted to make, and I know Anthony and you've been talking about like an investment plan, just so that we're all clear, I would assume that this money would all be included in the investment plan, so we get it to grow as much as possible. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
And we haven't left that out because we talked to Antonina, thinking there's no need to add any language here while she's working on the investment plan anyways, all city money, city money, and whatever is invested would be invested, whatever best practices we all think it is, part of the finance committee we're talking about.
And I have, you know, I have a draft investment policy, but I've also contacted two different organizations who could help us manage this and manage the investments overall.
And is that something you envision the new finance committee helping us evaluate and make some decisions about?
Yeah, I would like those organizations to make presentations to both the finance committee and the council, and the finance committee to take a look at that and look at the differences between the two companies, and then the recommendations to council.
Right, okay, so, Mr. Day, I think I heard you making, suggesting a motion to amend section two, two, two dash one, section two, to strike upon adoption of this ordinance and change that to upon completion of the mid-year budget review?
For FY twenty-six?
I think we have to be specific, because since it's on the deposit, there was that...
The FY twenty-six mid-year budget review, and the same change to section three, strike upon adoption of this ordinance, and change it to upon completion of the FY twenty-six mid-year budget review, is that accurate?
As long as the sponsors are okay with that amendment.
I mean, my preference, obviously, is to keep it as is, but I understand the concern, so I'm not against it, I understand why.
What do you see as the advantage of doing it right away?
No, I'm just, just so it's not, you know, it's showing up as a...
Set aside.
Set aside for BASF or CI, but it's same.
It's a bookkeeping thing, in other words.
It doesn't matter, it does not matter, honestly, to me, it's, at this point, whatever the language there states, it's just a formality, so I'm okay with the proposed amendment, I'll leave that to, that's my opinion.
That's January, right?
I would, I presume...
Generally, we do the mid, either late January or very early February, is when we have the mid-year budget review.
Can we second, as sponsors, or does it have to be...
Before you, to be on the safer side, could we reduce the number, like you suggested, or could we put just kind of like a caveat in there?
Whatever, yeah.
Like upon adoption or something?
I was wondering if we could entertain an ability to get some funding with the adoption of the ordinance, with additional fundings being reviewed at mid-year, and the completion, and or, excuse me, I guess it would be the council's sign-off on the audited budget and the mid-year, so I was wondering if we could get some type of funding, you know, whether it's, you know, one million, one million, two million, five hundred thousand, something.
Can I make a separate one? So I think about it differently, you know, in a sense that first, six months reserves that we're aiming to have, and then we put the three, four, five, or four, I would make a motion to keep the four for the section two upon adoption, and change the three, you know, so not do it until we confirm it, so that is, we are putting aside, creating this fund BASF that shows six month, you know, in a restricted amount, and then we'll address the initial deposit for the SIF at a time, hopefully we have an mid-year budget capital improvement plan as well, so we have a better sense of what is that amount that we could start with, R plus, whatever the plan shows, that way it's more, I don't want to say logical, but maybe better.
I'm not sure I quite understand, are you suggesting that go ahead and move the initial deposit of four million for the Budget Stabilization Fund now, but defer the capital and infrastructure
For the mid-year review.
To the mid-year review, which would leave us with roughly four point four million in that restricted fund?
Because moving four right now, basically says that we're in restricted have BASF, you know, for like six months for our expenditures, which we probably always want to have as a council anyways, and then we can literally lean on it tomorrow as well, so it's not a, there's no limitation of, do we need more funds, then Antonina comes to us and says, hey, we do need, I don't know, there's a diversity, but the point being is like, I think we all agree that six months is what we're aiming to have at a minimum, and then section two would, unchanged, accomplished, and section three is like, okay, in that timeline, we hopefully have a capital infrastructure plan as well in place that can then guide the timing of this as well for the funding of that, so I would recommend only amending section three of prior amendment that you mentioned.
Oh, that's interesting.
Is that, Anthony, can we get your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be okay.
To leave four point four...
Yeah, because that's more, yeah, and we are expecting taxes.
Oh, sorry.
To leave values of roughly four point two in unrestricted funds, just under four point four, four point three nine five.
That seems pretty conservative.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need to make a new motion?
Well, we never had a second on the first one, so we'll let that one die.
Yep, yep.
And then, so, the motion now is to amend section two, two, two dash eleven, section three, to strike upon adoption of this ordinance and replace that with upon council's acceptance of the fiscal twenty-five audit report?
Mid-year, mid-year review.
Or the mid-year review, because this is now the end of the audit.
That would be for the annual contribution of surplus revenues, I would still urge, this would be mid-year review.
No, I'll prefer that, that's fine.
I'll go with Anthony, because are you a...
No, I think the mid-year budget review is fine.
Which one's your preference out of the two?
The budget. No, the budget review, because at that point we'll know, you know, that'll...
So, we...
I'm sorry.
Strike upon adoption of this ordinance and change it to upon completion of the mid-year budget review for fiscal twenty-six.
Section three only.
Section three only. Okay, so the motion is to amend...
Can I ask a question? What happens if we don't want to move forward at that point? Where's our...
Let's not say, if we had to put a caveat in...
Right.
Per a vote during this, per, during the budget.
So this would be upon a vote by council after the completion of the mid-year budget review?
Okay. That works.
Okay, so the amendment now is to amend section two, two, two dash eleven, section three, to strike upon adoption of this ordinance and replace it with upon a vote by council following the completion of the fiscal twenty-six mid-year budget review. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second, who made the motion?
I guess I did, or you did, or I don't care.
I just wanted to be clear who made the motion.
I made a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, so Mr. Zubaka made it, Mr. Day, Mr. Zell seconded it, okay, this, would you call, roll again for this amendment, please?
Yes.
Council President Suzanne Satter.
Yes.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Yes.
Councilperson Nerwin Zubaka.
Yes.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Madaway.
Yes.
So the amendment is adopted.
If there are no further amendments or conversation, I would push forward on the ordinance, whether it are proposed to amendments or adopted to amendments.
So as amended, so your motion is to adopt ordinance five, five, three as amended?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, once again, call the roll, this time for the ordinance as a whole.
Council President Suzanne Satter.
Yes.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Yes.
Councilperson Nerwin Zubaka.
Yes.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Madaway.
Yes.
Okay, the order is adopted, thank you both for your very, all your thorough work on this.
Thank you all, great discussion.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is resolution 2025-32 to appoint Laura Fontana to the finance committee for a three-year term. I'll read the resolution. Resolution 2025-32, a resolution to appoint Laura Fontana to the finance committee. Whereas the Newcastle City Council established the finance committee via resolution 2025-28, and whereas the City of Newcastle City Council shall appoint three members to the finance committee, one for a three-year term, one for a two-year term, and one for a one-year term to establish staggered terms. Thereafter, all terms shall be for three years. Oh, and I just noticed it's a clerical. It's term, not turn, bird. T-E-R-M. Whereas the City Council proposes to confirm the appointment of Laura Fontana to the finance committee for a three-year term, now therefore be a result that the City Council hereby appoints the following person to the finance committee for a three-year term. Laura Fontana, Finance Committee, term ending July 28, 2028. Ms. Fontana is not here this evening. She sent information for the council about herself. She is a, has 29 years of experience in financial services and she's a certified financial planner. She's worked with a number of our nonprofits here in town to help them with their finance committees and managing their investment policy. So.
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My appointment is approved.
Madam President, if you want to share the reading, we can help out if you'd like.
Okay, if my voice gets out, I may do that. Thank you, Mr. Day. Fortunately, they're pretty sure. At resolution 2025-34, a resolution to appoint Christopher Cashman to the finance committee. Ms. Hatfield, the resolutions are identical except for the names and the length of the terms. Do I have to read the entire resolution?
No, before each one, I would just say the whereas clauses are identical and that part will not be read and then read the part that's not identical.
Great, thank you. That helps. The resolution, the whereas clauses are identical and so I will read the parts that are different. Well, the first two whereas clauses are identical. And the different part is, whereas the City Council proposes to confirm the appointment of Christopher Cashman to the finance committee for a two-year term, now therefore be a result that the City Council hereby appoints the following person to the finance committee for a two-year term. Christopher Cashman, Finance Committee, term ending July 8, 2027. Mr. Cashman is also not with us, but he sent an extended resume covering his lifelong residence in Newcastle and he's the sixth generation in his family to live here. He has worked with the county government and primarily in real estate and is now the manager of the Patterson-Schwarz Real Estate Office in Newark since 1997. He's involved with the community through the, he's the former president of the public library and during his term, they expanded the library and he oversaw that work and that was a $6 million project. And he's also a former board member of the Historical Society and a former board member of the Professional Standards Committee of the Newcastle County Board of Realtors. So, is there a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cashman is appointed. And resolution 2025-35, a resolution to appoint Jonathan Justice to the finance committee. The first two whereas clauses are identical to the first resolution dealing with this committee and the differences are, whereas the City Council proposes to confirm the appointment of Jonathan Justice to the finance committee for a one-year term, now therefore be a result that the City Council hereby appoints the following person to the finance committee for a one-year term. Jonathan Justice, Finance Committee, term ending July 8, 2026. Mr. Justice is here. Did you wish to say anything? No? Okay. Mr. Dr. Justice. Dr. Justice is a professor.
Professor to have an open mind.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Good point, Dr. Justice.
Dr. Justice is a professor in the Joseph Arby School of Public Policy and Administration at the University of Delaware, where he's taught undergraduate courses in public policy, graduate courses in public and nonprofit financial management, organizational leadership, government budgeting, and local economic development. He's also associated with the University of Birmingham's Institute of Local Government Studies, the University of Delaware's Institute of Public Administration, and his adjunct faculty at Rutgers University, Seton Hall University of Brook College as part of the City University of New York. So.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I just wanted to say, Madam President, how lucky we are to have such great three.
I was going to say the same thing.
And I just wanted to, with so much expertise to like, I'm reading these resumes and it's incredible. And I want to just point out, I'm one of the pupils of Dr. Justice's financial management class. So, I don't think I can claim the brains, but I, you know, I've been learning from one of the best.
Yes, I think we're going to have a group of people with varied experience and I think that's going to be very valuable.
Definitely.
And then finally, resolution 20, well, not final, next, the final. Resolution 2025-36, a resolution to appoint Joseph Day to the finance committee. Whereas the Newcastle City Council established the finance committee via resolution 2025-28, and whereas the City of Newcastle County, Newcastle City Council shall have one additional city council member to the finance committee in addition to the council president. And whereas the City Council proposes to confirm the appointment of Joseph Day to the council seat on the finance committee, now therefore be a result that the City Council hereby appoints the following person to the finance committee for the council seat, Joseph Day, Finance Committee. We all know Mr. Day's expertise and background and is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved and thank you, Mr. Day, for signing up for yet one more meeting. All right, now, this, well, should we do Mr. Emery and then come back to that one? I'm sorry. The last appointment resolution is resolution 2025-37, a resolution to appoint William Emery to the flood resiliency committee. Whereas the Newcastle City Council established the sea level rise task force by resolution 2022-04, and whereas the resolution, resolution 2023-32 converted that task force to a permanent committee now known as the flood resiliency committee. And whereas resolution 2023-32 also established a staggered schedule of expiration of the terms of the current members of the task force. And whereas a vacancy exists on this committee. Whereas the City Council proposes to confirm the appointment of William Emery to complete the unfulfilled terms of Gale sites with that term ending on December 31, 2027. Now therefore be a result that the City Council hereby appoints the following person to the flood resiliency committee, William Emery, Flood Resiliency Committee, term ending December 31, 27. Mr. Emery is also here. Did you want to say anything?
Just that I'll strive to serve the committee and the council investment though.
Well, thank you. Mr. Emery sends some information as well. He has a background in the construction field as a project manager, topography, land elevation, water runoff control. And received his education at Delaware Technical College, the Architectural Engineering Program. And that training included planning permitted and through construction. So, he's many years of experience working with the county land use department in reference to many commercial and residential projects. So, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Emery is appointed. All right, and then the final thing is a discussion of a possible change in the composition of the finance committee, which Mr. Zubaka, give to tell us about your thoughts on that.
Yeah, this is, you know, almost ironic because we just discussed this at the last minute, last minute regular meeting and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, but after the meeting, I thought that, you know, none of, I remember when we established playing our subcommittee at the time, we had, and I'm not saying this is policy, but at the time, we got only one council member serving, council president as a member. And then when I got elected as a council, stepped down saying, we should probably just have one person on this, on a committee. So, I started thinking, oh geez, we're appointing two members without the council to be on a, on a committee. And, you know, so I thought and called council president to talk about it and say, well, should we, you know, and this is, I love both of my colleagues who are serving in the committee from the council, but it's more of a kind of procedural thing to say, should we have two more residents being presented on a, on an E-FAC that will provide us even with more additional expertise? And then their ideas when they come down to council, we can buy and find, look at those proposals and then, you know, provide our feedback at that point and vote on those ideas. So, that was just kind of a side thought I had to replace the two council members with two more members of the public. I know that's hard in general because it's hard to find, you know, people who are willing to volunteer their time and thank you all tonight, all four of you for not just E-FAC, but also the flood resiliency committee accepting these nominations and then putting the names and being nominated. But that was just kind of a thought process there. In a sense, like, would two people from council being these committees reuse kind of conversation that we have at council later because presumably both of you are at that point in agreement with those ideas coming to the council and then just, you know, we are, you know, left out of the initial conversation, whereas being only residents would ensure that council is meeting those ideas here for the first time and discussing them and that, that, you know, we would typically with every other topic. That's just the summary of that. I don't know if I'm missing anything from our conversation, council president, but that's kind of where this.
You summarized it, yes. And I will say my opinion here until we hear from the others. Mr. Zell, Mr. Madaway, do either of you have any comments on this or questions? Or Mr. Day, since it's next.
I know you didn't ask my opinion, but, and that's okay, but we already have three residents on there by appointments we just made, so you want to add two more residents instead of council.
Correct.
But you might have five residents enough saying any of them being appointed that aren't familiar with how the budget and everything work. So, it would be good to have people on there.
Great, great point, yeah. That was, that was a discussion I had with council president as well and thought there. The response I had with that was that we would have still see the administrator there as well as, you know, to explain the progress of the budget and then any in that, you know, stuff about reports would be provided presumably by treasurer as well as the finance director. So, that was kind of my response there that, you know, it's not this, I don't think it's, while I agree with me, I think we have three people, that's what, you know, this wouldn't be a main issue for me if that wasn't the case, if we did go forward with that.
I guess, I've been thinking about this since our conversation and I think the city administrator's perspective on the budget is different from a council member's perspective on the budget. The city administrator is a trained technician in some ways with knowledge of financing through her education and her prior experience, whereas the council members are here as representing the public. And the county, the city administrator answers to the council, the council answers to the public. And that's why I think the council members should be part of this committee. It is a, an advisory committee. It's not a policymaking body. So, I don't see it as conflicting with our role on the council. And nothing's going to say that that committee's going to be unanimous in its opinion. We may get, you know, four of us think this and three of us think that and the council's going to have to evaluate that. In fact, I think I would like to hear minority reports, if you will, not just they approved it four to three.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Because I think we want the input of all, of all the experience and the various perspectives that these people bring and the various people that we as council members bring. So, that's where I stand on it. I think at least as we get started, I prefer to stay with the format we've established, the composition we've established. If some of your concerns are borne out, we can have another resolution to change the composition of the committee in the future. That's, that's my thought. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
The only thing that I'll add is that I do agree that there should be some council presence on the committee because I do think the council brings a different perspective. Now, if you wanted to go to four community members and one person on council or something, I wouldn't be totally opposed to that, but I do think councils should have a presence on the panel because again, like council president said, I think council brings a different perspective than the city administrator. And I think it's needed on this separate committee. Just my thoughts.
I agree.
I'm surprised that you pulled that out.
Some of it, I agree with President Sauter and her statement, so I, the composition, I think is fine as is.
First, I want to thank council president for bringing this forward. I think this is something that's definitely beneficial to the city. And applaud the three residents who elegantly volunteered. We are definitely in a better position today with them a part of the team than yesterday. I do see, I think what councilman Zubaka is going or potentially proceeding where 40% of the council has weighed in on the decision before it gets to council. And me being somewhat unaware, but don't think it ever, has ever happened and previously in another committee type of setting that provides some type of recommendation. I do think that very experiences and perspectives are warranted and wonder if it's something that possibly should be monitored or maybe even possibly consider where maybe one of the council people doesn't necessarily vote or make a non-voting perspective because if something comes out of, you know, say the finance committee, an idea and two council people vote for it, then essentially they just have to convince one other person. And then conversely, if two people are against it, they just have to essentially convince one other person. And I don't think people are going to, if it comes out of quote-quote committee with a recommendation of yea or nay by said council person, I doubt that when it comes before council, they're going to go in the opposite direction. So, it's almost like leading their vote before it kind of gets to a vote. But again, I recognize the need of this committee and the diversity of ideas and perspectives. And I just want to just throw that out there, but recognize that all these conversations, all these discussions will be had in the public domain. They will be recorded. The public will be invited, et cetera. But the paramount need is for the city to have this type of organization. And I think that we're, again, in a better position today than we were yesterday.
Just a couple of comments on what you said. So, at any point, 40% of council can go out of here and make a decision. And just as you and Nerwin worked on this budget stabilization fund and debt improvement fund, I mean, you already have some votes or you're working on it, right? So, that isn't abnormal, but what I also say is, the three candidates we selected are not, I don't perceive any of them to go along with council just because they want, they want to be liked and want to go along with council. We have three strong candidates and I look at council's role in this as neither, none of us here, I don't believe are finance experts and we're going to take information, you know, I mean, from this committee. I look at it as a learning experience and, but also being able to provide our perspective, not so much of trying to sway the vote. Again, like you said, everything's in public, they're public meetings. Anything that has to come back here is all, you know, advertised and public information. So, I don't look at it as us trying to, you know, sway the recommendations as much as make sure they understand the perspective of council as well.
No, I appreciate that. And I wasn't saying that that's something that I believe. I just wanted to just throw it out there that something we just need to be aware of that others may think or say, just like we're in the bank. And it's like how you disprove negative, right? that others may think or say, just like we're gonna think. Uh, and it's like, how do you disprove a negative, right? You, you, you don't, you just continue to work, we all do, and, um, and travel forward. But thank you.
So, you go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, um, make my comment about all this. I, I know we're all in Newcastle, so I, I just want to preface all this with it. I, I actually, um, will, what, what Council President mentioned about, let's try this out, it makes absolute sense, because, um, it was more like afterthought that I called Council President saying, oh, I wish I had this discussion with council at the time, um, and I would like to still talk about it in case we can, you know, uh, change it. So I, I'm not really strongly feeling we, we need to change this right now. It, it was more about precedent kind of thing, where, you know, none of the other committees or commissions have this, uh, structure. Uh, but yeah, to what Councilperson they just mentioned, you know, like, um, we're all just getting this information, trying to decipher it. So I, if this becomes one of those things that it's streamlined and we don't end up having discussion about things, I'll bring this up again, or whoever is in this chair, maybe. So.
Okay.
So.
So.
I, I, I guess I'm okay with, um, not okay, I support the current structure of it. I obviously voted up a council person day before this, and, and truly think all the other candidates are amazing as well. So, um, I, thank you for this discussion. It just kind of reiterates how strong community and talent we have, and how long our bench is, and how dedicated people are to Newcastle, so that's all I want to say.
Aye.
And not to prolong this meeting anymore.
Thank you. Okay, so I think I'm hearing the consensus is we leave it as it was written for now, and Mr. Dubaka will hold our feet to the fire if he thinks there's a problem.
Well, not just me, I, I'm sure everybody will, that's what, that's, that was my comment about, you know, we all are, you know, a team in council, so I, I don't think I'm, I'm, I'll be the only one to say, hey, hold on, you know, so I think that, that applies to everybody, but yes, I, I will do.
Everybody else agree with it? Okay, and I think we're finished. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?